You are. So, welcome to the special session six D. So, this is about AI. One of the hottest topics in machine learning these days. And rightfully so, the embedded community has to, has to say a lot about this topic. So, we have two outstanding talks that will, will, will go probably in a reversed order simply because our speaker from Facebook is a bit late. So, we'll start.
You're now Radu.
I'm here.
I'm here, Radu. Oh, great. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry. So, yeah, I was, I was just saying we have two great speakers. So, the first speaker is Dr. Vikas Chandra. He's the director of research, AI research at Facebook. And he will talk about efficient audio visual understanding on AR devices. Then the second talk will be the, by Professor Robert O'Graves from University of Wisconsin Medicine about application-specific accelerators and edge devices. And finally, I'll conclude this session on communication, where this is with the training and inference. So, without any further ado, Vikas, it's all yours. Please start your part.
All right, let me share my presentation. You guys can see my screen, I hope. Thanks, Radu, for the introduction. Yeah, it's my pleasure to be here. I know it's only fifteen minutes talk, but I'll try to give an overview of why you believe that, you know, on-device AI is going to be an interesting, you know, challenging opportunity for us in the next, you know, many, many years to come. I work in the Facebook Reality Labs. I lead the non-device AI team. And I'll talk mostly about one particular problem that we are looking at, which is audio visual understanding. But, but before we do that, I want to give a little bit of a context of what augmented reality glasses mean for us. So, if you look at the glasses like what I'm wearing, it's basically to help me see the world better. But the vision that we have is what if we can augment that to make the world a very, very different place, right? What if we are able to augment things which can help us lead our life in a better way? And at, at the, the ideal vision is that the, the difference between augmented and virtual world will vanish and it will become one seamless world that we enjoy. And I'll give some examples that explain why that will be really, really useful. So, let's take an example of a situation where you're walking late at night. What if with just a gesture or a flick of a button, you are able to increase what you see around the world or make the world brighter? The second example is, you know, and this is, I've been really, you know, you know, true in the last one year where we are not able to meet our loved ones. What if we are able to see the world virtually with them, almost sharing the same space as, as, as we are with our, you know, friends in physical proximity? The third example is, you know, as I mentioned, I wear glasses. What if you are able to see things in, in a much more visually equity way? So, the, these are all examples where if we have a device like an augmented reality glasses that's on our face, it can help us do many, many things. And there are a lot more examples which I'm not be able to go through in this talk. But let's take an example of just a simple thing. Let's say you want to put, you know, sort of a, a display on top of an object that you see which describes what that is, right? Even for that to happen, a lot of technologies have to come together, right? It, it's just, you know, very, very interesting engineering problem. So, you have optics and display to display the object. You need to have eye tracking because you just don't want to display everything that you are seeing, right? You have to be able to tell that, you know, what is it that's more interesting to you? You need computer vision again to understand what it is that you're looking at and, and, and what's that about? Graphics, audio, contextual awareness, wall locking, right? That's very important because once you put a tag on something, if you are moving around, if that object is moving around, you really don't want, you know, that to be not locked to the device. So, like, what I'm trying to say is even for a simple use case where you want to put a name to a device or, or an object in the real world, lot of technologies have to come together to make it happen. Now, the main question is, once you go into the idea of a glass, it has to have certain parameters. So, first of all, it has to be socially acceptable, lightweight. It has to, you know, the battery should last all day. And that's what makes the, the compute problem very interesting. And it has to be thermally constrained, which means that, you know, it's sitting next to your face. It really can't get hotter. So, that means that you can, really cannot go beyond the peak of computation. Now, I talked about these things in the last slide, right? You know, display optics, audio, CV and all that. Now, one thing that's becoming very, very interesting is that in the last few years, pretty much all of these use cases will be driven by AI. So, AI is playing a role in CV, of course, is playing a role in how we interact with devices. So, with hand tracking, with gestures, with, you know, EMG. Audio is, is going, I mean, pretty much all in the, in the realm of AI and, and so is display. Now, when we talk about AI, you know, we do want to make sure that most of what we want to do with these glasses need to run on device. And there are many reasons for that. The, the primary one is privacy. So, for example, we don't want the, you know, the user data to go away from the devices, right? People are very sensitive about what they're recording or what they're listening. So, it has to be private. Latency is a big issue as well. So, even with 5G, we are not always guaranteed that we have a stable connection. We may be going to, you know, some hiking where you may not have the, the 5G network, for example. Connectivity and energy, right? So, all of these reasons are, you know, really good reasons why we need to have the computation on device locally with the user itself. Now, it doesn't have to be everything on device. There is always a sort of a cascaded approach. So, for example, you know, if, if somebody says hello to me, you know, so wake word or keyword spotting can run always on, on device. Those are, you know, cheaper models. However, if you look at ASR, I mean, that's a little bit bigger model as you can see from the example. The model size for the wake word is, you know, in kilobytes range, ASR can go into megabyte range. That doesn't have to be always on. This could still run on the glass, but it will be on demand and there is a wake-up latency as well. But if you have to go to a, a very, very large model like a language understanding model where the model sizes can go in gigabyte range, you know, this, this could potentially run the cloud, but the network latency is much higher, right? It's in hundreds of millisecond. So, we could come up with a structure where parts of your use cases run closer to the user, but and part of the use cases run on the cloud. Now, all applications are not equal. So, in this example, I'm showing like four axis, memory bandwidth latency, how often the, the devices are, that particular use case is used and the computation intensity. And I'm just going to run through, you know, different use cases from speech, video understanding, eye tracking, hand tracking, keyword spotting. And the point is, you know, all the use cases are not the same. They have very, very different requirement. So, how do you build a system that can support this heterogeneous application with no user latency and, and it can support high resolution data which the cameras will provide? So, from the system side, we really need, you know, something which can give ten to hundred X more efficiency than what we have right now for mobile. So, let's take an example of video understanding. So, video understanding is a use case where we can figure out what is happening in the video, right? At a coarse level where you can see on the left or even more fine-grained where, you know, there are multiple things happening and you can actually figure out which person is doing what. And this could be really useful to give a context in, in many cases to decide what to do from the AI perspective. Now, if you have to always keep the cameras on, it is very, very expensive. Just the camera sensor itself is runs in hundreds of milliwatt and we don't have the luxury of that much power on the glasses itself. And then, and then there is transmission cost, right? So, once you capture a frame, you still have to send to some application processor for doing the analysis or inference and that's expensive. So, one way, you know, we thought about this is having a cascaded approach where cheaper modality like audio or IMU could, could trigger something, you know, and tell us that something interesting is happening and, and that can cut down the total cost from giga flops to tens of mega flops. The transmission costs are cheaper as well because the audio clips are a lot more cheaper in terms of data as opposed to a, a video frame. So, let's see how that works. So, let's say, you know, I'm always listening and I already said these are cheaper modalities. It doesn't consume that much power, very small model. And once I detect something interesting is happening, then I can trigger the next model, which is, you know, let's start the camera and figure out if I hear, if I heard something, it's that interesting or not. And now we go to a next level of models which are a little bit bigger. And I understand that, oh, you know, maybe it's basketball happening. And if it's interesting to me, then I can basically have the spatial temporal model where I can look at multiple frames in CV domain over audio domain. And with a much larger model, I can get a very fine-grained activity detection of what's happening. And it's not just basketball, but it could be dribbling, dunking, blocking and so on and so forth. So, this is an approach where by doing the cascaded way, we are still preserving the battery life and still giving the user interesting things to capture automatically. Now, it's just not about models. It's also about where these models are run. So, you know, we can do hardware aware network design, which is the model architecture. But at the same time, we can also do the customized neural network accelerator, right? Which is where these models are running and there are ways to co-design them and, and I'll briefly touch upon that. But I mean, the metric could be anything that we choose to be, right? So, it could be high accuracy, it could be low latency. It could even be a smaller memory footprint because sometime memories leak and they consume lot of power. So, it, it just depends on, you know, what we optimize from, from a system perspective. So, if you look at the, from the network design perspective, when, you know, the whole deep learning, you know, second, you know, the, the winter got over, people really cared a lot about how to build really accurate models, right? And achieve human level accuracy. This was the early phase of deep learning in, in, in the 2012, 2015 timeframe. And after that, you know, there, there came, you know, second wave where we really started to look at accuracy per operation, right? So, MobileNet and ResNeXt and lot of these new models came. But in the last few years, what we have really been looking at are models which are optimized for deployment, right? We really want to take these models and be able to run them on the edge. So, look at the new class of models that have come about where, you know, it's not just about, you know, how, how, you know, accurate they are or how much compute do, do they need. It also about latency and energy. And having this sort of three-dimensional way to think about model topology opens up a very interesting domain of research on how to optimize and design models for these edge devices. And this is just an example of, you know, throwing neural architecture search where if you have in the search space different hardware building blocks, you know, that you can use different network topology or what we call backbones, then we can very efficiently search what they will look like, you know, once we combine them with a particular constraint in, in terms of the model optimization. So, we did that, some of that. And this is an example where we could get, you know, a one percent accuracy gain at the same hardware latency. Or we can save a huge amount of latency as the same accuracy. So, there are different trade-offs you can play as I was mentioning earlier. But the goal is that instead of doing it manually by a human, essentially you can throw, you know, tools like network architecture search with the right sort of optimization variable in there to optimize for whatever the, the goals are. So, with that, I, I come to the last slide, which is the, the future directions. So, I mentioned the co-optimization part. This is something that I think is going to be very, very critical as, you know, companies like Facebook, but there are other, you know, research groups as well who will start looking into designing models, architecture and hardware together at the same time. And how do we do that together where we are not designing models for a given hardware or vice versa, but at the same time? The second research is, you know, will be in, in near in sensor or, or near sensor computation. So, I mentioned earlier already that like if we have to take the camera frames outside of the sensor and do some computation, even if nothing interesting is happening, I've still consumed, you know, milliwatts of power. What if we have, you know, an AI model running very close to sensor that can detect very cheaply if I have a human face or, or not, right? If I'm detecting humans and if, if nothing is interesting is happening, I don't even send the data outside to the, to the, to the competition block and that can save lot of power. And the last one is personalization, right? So, we don't expect the model to be static. You know, we, we really believe that there will be lifelong learning which will continue to happen. And, and how do we enable our edge devices to be able to train, you know, small amount of, with small amount of data at the edge? So, I believe these are some of the open questions that we are looking at. And I, I really hope that with this ESV community of researchers, they are able to help us solve some of this tougher problem. So, with that, that comes to the end of my talk.
Thank, thank you very much Vikas and for your great talk. And we have probably time for one question only. If anyone wants to ask a quick question, please feel free to text it in, in the chat box or ask. And mute yourself and ask. Well, if there is no question, I like to ask myself a question. So, in the, in the in the three axes that you showed there, which I completely agree with in terms of philosophy, what should we do or as a community? What do you think to have a greater, to get a greater recognition from the traditional machine learning communities where essentially ninety percent of the focus is completely on accuracy even now?
Yeah, that's true, Radu, right? But I think what we have been noticing at least in the, in the, in the top AI conferences that there is a lot more stuff happening around for say, you know, quantization, which is not just eight bits, but going really, really below even to binary neural network. I've been seeing a very interesting trend of using pruning and sparsity to optimize models. So, all of that research has started to take momentum now, right? And, and so I'm really glad to see that. But I mean, I think people will soon realize that at the end of the day, it's, you know, we have already surpassed human, you know, requirements in terms of accuracy in many, many of the models. So, there's no point pushing anymore. I think the question becomes that given, given where we, where we are, how do we optimize them to be really, really more suitable for this edge devices? And, and at least, you know, internally in, in any large organization, we are always seeing that push. But I'm happy to see the push is already starting to come in academic community as well. And I hope that continues.
Yeah, I, I was referring primarily not, I, I completely agree with your point. So, it's good to see quantization and pruning and all these things going on. But I was thinking more from a, a direct approach toward incorporating energy metrics. You mentioned thermal metrics. So, of course, if you prune a network, it will consume less energy, but this is an after fact. I was thinking to see energy pushed as a first-class citizen, for instance, in the optimization function rather than to say, oh, this results in the, I'm in better energy.
So, so just to that, right? So, pruning and even quantization are not done post-training, right? I think we have already folded both of them in the neural architecture search. And you can also fold in like if energy is the metric, right? We have what we call profiler. So, in the, in the neural architecture search, whenever you choose a topology or the model, you can run it to the profiler and it can, it can give you performance, latency, even energy. And you can use one of those metrics to optimize the search space, right? And so if energy is important, we can already do that. And then we have some results on that that will publishing it soon. You're muted, Radu, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I said, yes, thank you very much for your answer and for your great talk. Thank you. So, yeah. So, we'll move now to the second talk by Umit. So, Umit, you can share probably the screen and get right at it.
Okay, thank you, Radu. So, today I'll talk about AI devices from a health monitoring perspective. And this will be the joint work of my current and former students. Let me remove this. So, we observe when we look at the compute spectrum, we observe that there is a big shift in form factor from room full of computers to current handheld devices. While the progress is impressive, we still need to carry a bulky device, recharge it every day and rely on primitive interactions. There are some obvious trends, like we have lower power consumption, less energy and higher performance on a given form factor. But in addition to that, we also observe that there is an increased amount of sensors. And sensors actually can enable new applications that were not feasible before. And I will talk among all those different applications, some of which were discussed in the keynote and by Vikas and later Radu will discuss others. But I will focus one specific class of applications on health monitoring. So, if you look at the world population, fifteen percent lives with some type of disability. And close to two hundred million people face difficulties in functioning. International Parkinson's Movement Disorder Society on Society Task Force on Technology actually notices that low-cost and small form factor variable devices have a very great potential. However, due to a couple of technology and adaptation challenges, I will describe next, their full potential cannot be fulfilled. For example, the current practice is seeing a doctor, some health professional in person. So, I was very surprised to learn like very recently that the number of amputations increased by more than three X, like three times more during pandemic. So, there are a couple of like small issues that people can realize, can notice and then prevent. However, during pandemic, many people didn't go to their regular checkups. And things that could have been prevented very easily led to amputation. And the number of amputations is, as I told, three X or more. So, this could be very easily actually solved if there is more visibility. So, if we can provide more visibility to that professionals without actually having a real visit. So, you may think, is this something we are thinking in our community? Isn't it something the doctors, the health professionals, real professionals in this area should think? And actually, they do already. Like, for example, there is, there was a big Parkinson's disease PD challenge. They actually tried to collect data using smartphones and tried to automate diagnosis of Parkinson's disease using biomarkers. But when we look at the data collected, we see that sometimes the so-called data shared by them is just zeros, like there is no activity. And then when we try to find out the reason, they told that some patients couldn't carry them or they forgot to put the phone to their packet. Besides that, power consumption is large and very simple, real-time guarantees like something that cannot be actually guaranteed. Similarly, we surveyed, we started with about thirty thousand articles published in many repositories. And then after some automated filtering, we classified about one thousand of them, nine hundred and seventy-six. You can see that there is a very like clear trend and increasing number of studies that try to use variables like edge devices to do something useful, like for example, diagnosis. Like as you can see, diagnosis is by far one of the two leading applications. But when we talk to the health professionals, they say that diagnosis is actually something like quite hard. They would be very happy with even less. And what is less? For example, they say that sometimes they give some treatment. They, for example, give medication or they ask the patients do some activities. If a device can actually predict the response to the treatment, just observe how the situation changes. You don't even need to diagnose. It is a very, very big help to the professionals. And I will not go in details, but if you like, I can share the link. So, there are a lot of, a lot of interest in gate analysis, tremor, freezing of gates, movement disorders. So, even we don't do anything from our side, there is a demand for AI devices, algorithms, applications that can help this area. So, some question to ask is, why don't we see if they are so interested? Why don't we really see a big impact in this area? And there are user surveys. One of the leading reasons is patients feel awkward. They don't feel comfortable to wear devices which look weird. Like in Vikas's presentation, he called actually social, socially acceptable, the term socially acceptable. So, if it makes them feel different, people don't want to use them. So, as a remedy to this challenge, actually, there are, there is a lot of work, including last year's keynote. There is a lot of work on stretchable and flexible devices. One problem here is if you make everything stretchable, if you go to that end in materials, which is very, very exciting, we actually give up performance that we need. And definitely, we need to be able to run some meaningful processing. So, therefore, a hybrid solution where more of some processing is happening on a silicon device and then the rest goes to this type of stretchable and variable devices is promising. Another leading effect is compliance. Many people told that like patients, they stopped using after a couple of days because they don't want to recharge or they cannot worry about charging. So, they are not even able to use a smartphone as it is now. They will have to recharge, maintain another device. And here I will go a couple of, share a couple of results where we are trying to obtain an energy neutral operation. So, this means we will forget about charging or replacing the batteries. So, we may have still some battery, but we want to make sure that they can be forgotten by users. Another one is killer applications. Like if these devices don't do something useful at the edge, then why would anyone use them? So, therefore, I'll also provide some examples about applications like rehabilitation, activity recognition and physical activity promotion. And last but not least, a big, very big problem is a lack of unified platforms. So, again, in the Parkinson's disease technology workforce says that everyone works in their silos. Everyone has their own hardware, their own software. So, it is very hard to actually evaluate and use a common solution. So, now I'll give a little bit details on the energy harvesting. So, we cannot rely on batteries because they are bulky. And today is actually keynote explained a lot about why we need actually something more. So, our here solution is using flexible energy harvesting sources. For example, flexible photovoltaics, flexible physioelectric devices which can be hidden in clothing. And instead of completely discarding batteries, there are flexible batteries or very small super capacitors. They can be used energy buffers as energy buffers. For example, we demonstrated harvesting from human motion at micro watt levels, not much. Then light is especially outdoors is very, very useful. So, each of these subsystems work in parallel. Whenever we have any one of them, they will produce energy. And if we have sufficient harvested energy, we will run the device like intermittent computing does. But at the same time, we can store some of it as, as buffer for future use. And whenever we have insufficient energy, then actually we can use whatever is available, but the bulk of the energy will be coming from the battery. So, you can think that as the capacity of this battery goes to zero in the limit, then it becomes intermittent computing. If we don't have harvested energy, we don't do anything. But why should we leave it out if we can have these small devices? As I will show shortly, we can actually increase the duty cycle, the utility significantly. Now, if we combine all, how much energy can we actually generate? So, we did experiments with these flexible devices. And in short, we, we can generate over a day about zero point six milliamp hours at three point six volts, which is one-fifth of a battery that comes with commercial variable devices. So, one-fifth of a battery is not like same as having it. But I think it is a very good starting point. And can we do something with this? Yes, we can combine it with optimal runtime management. So, I will not go into details, but we can say that we'll do a finite horizon optimization where our finite horizon is one day. And over a day, we, at the beginning of the day, we look at how much energy we can harvest, how much do we need to consume for the particular application? And we can allocate optimally our energy per, as a function of time. Like, for example, here, the battery level, our backup battery level, let's say is around twenty in the beginning of the day. Later in the day, since there is not enough harvested energy, we are using it up from the battery. Later, when we have more energy, it goes up. And the more, the most critical thing is, at the end of the day, we have a boundary condition which guarantees that we will finish the day at the level that we started. So, it means except for the lifetime of the battery, we don't really need to worry about the charge because every day it will be used as much as it guarantees to finish the day at the same level. And this finite optimization algorithm satisfies And this finite optimization algorithm satisfies this boundary condition plus some safety conditions while maximizing the device utility. So what can we do? Now, what actually can we do with this type of things? There are a lot of interesting applications, like human activity recognition, like Vikas talked, some of them. Once we know the person is moving, like walking, we can analyze the quality of the gait for treatment, for example. Home-based rehabilitation is very exciting. Another, like, very high-impact area is freezing of gait. Like, for example, like this video shows, sometimes Parkinson's Disease patients just freeze. But if we can provide them some audio clues, audio cues before they freeze, actually, this freezing of gait can be completely eliminated. So can we have these edge AI devices which will predict a freezing of gait and provide audio cues such that they actually avoid it? And vital signal monitoring is one of the most popular applications. So without going into details, I'll talk about human activity recognition, which provides like a state, it provides the background for many advanced other algorithms. Like in the first keynote, sorry, in the first talk, if we know that the person is running or doing something like basketball, then this kind of, this kind of a small algorithm or model can trigger something bigger. So we implemented it actually. It can recognize a variety of activities. And we can get twelve point five milliwatts on a conventional microprocessor, which is like much larger than what we can get from energy harvesting. But we can get about fifteen microwatts using an hardware accelerator, which makes it manageable with harvested energy. Another one is a millimeter wave-based rehabilitation system, which was actually presented this year at CODES. So the input is a millimeter wave point cloud, which is not very easy to make sense. We have a target which can be obtained by a camera. And this simple system in using milliwatt-level power can generate the same as the camera. So without dealing with video and complex system, we can actually generate this type of rehabilitation movements and give feedback at home. And if the person is not able to do any of these activities, then it can trigger a visit. So in summary, I think we are actually overdue to the next transition. Next transition will bring some form factor changes and lots of sensors. So that will require running many algorithms in many small devices, as Radu will talk next. And one of the major problems is powering them without using big batteries. So energy harvesting, self-powering or energy-neutral operation is very important. So these problems cannot be solved just by hardware or software. So we need to combine system design, processing algorithms. And not everything can be done here, obviously, so it will be triggered. So like Vikas was saying, something will be done at the edge. But the more we do here, the less communication energy we will pay. And then there will be some collaboration with other devices like Federated Learning, that we will discuss, or cloud, as Vikas was talking about. And it is an exciting time to work on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Amit. Thank you. Very nice. We have time for a question? If anyone wants to ask from the audience? If there is no question in the interest of time, I will go and conclude this session with my talk so we can be ready for the final panel. So again, good morning, good afternoon, good night, everyone. So we're, I'm Radha Markless, and I'm going to talk about, one second, I still have a problem with my sharing. Can you, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, because I tried to share. Okay. And I'm going to talk about more from a methodology standpoint, what can we do to enable the vision that both Vikas and Amit mentioned about as well as the keynote this morning? So let me start by defining the problem space first. So at the top layer is the cloud, where you have a number of data centers with quasi-infinite computer and storage resources. Then the middle and the bottom layers consist of this myriad of devices, like cell phones, wearables, robots, self-driving cars, IoT devices, so on and so forth. The big advantage of edge computing is that compared to the cloud, it offers low latency for the user due to its physical proximity. For instance, imagine an autonomous vehicle waiting for the cloud to respond whether or not the brake should be activated to avoid an unexpected obstacle. On the other hand, these devices have very limited power, usually running on batteries. So they are limited in terms of computation and storage capacities as well. So when designing edge AI, we should account for these limitations. Or, so to enable a seamless operation across the edge cloud continuum, we need to discuss distributed learning, where latency, memory and energy become first-class citizens besides accuracy. Very importantly, we need to account for human behavior, which is an important part of this equation. So the punchline of my talk is that edge AI, it's in the end all about networks, meaning understanding and accounting for network structure and dynamics when designing the future of such edge AI systems. So in the remaining of my talk, I want to bring three important ideas that I think will play a major part in enabling edge AI. All these ideas have the network at their very core. So the first idea is communication-aware model compression. And this should help with on-device inference. So let's have a little bit of historical perspective first. So about a decade ago, edge AI research made this transition from the classical machine learning to the newly discovered deep learning. And this enabled a large set of applications ranging from speech processing, VR, AR, all the way to bioinformatics, bioengineering, just to name a few. However, the vast majority of DNN models proposed to date are still large when it comes to the number of parameters, as well as energy hungry when it comes to the number of operations they can perform. So for instance, if we look at classical models here, like VGG and ResNet, they involve over hundred million parameters and are energy hungry. Even the more performant models, oops, I'm sorry, like Inception, are quite complex for many resource-constrained devices. Recently, we got into trillion parameters domains, so such models can, for speech recognition, so such models cannot simply fit the constraints of the edge AI and IoT applications. So if we were to achieve the dream that, or the vision that both Vikas and Amit articulated, we need a new breed of analytics, and this is what I'm going to focus next. So clearly, model compression is, has been researched. We have approaches based on pruning, quantization, lower rank factorization, so on and so forth. But my point here is that rather than doing this on device, we need to focus on a communicational-aware form of model compression. So the new angle I'm pushing for is knowledge-based distillation, where the network science plays a significant role. So let's look first at the basis of knowledge distillation as shown here in the left-hand side of the slide. So this consists of basically a teacher architecture, which is a large deep network that we want to compress, and then a student architecture, which is a significantly smaller neural network, which is trained to mimic the output of the teacher network. So to mimic the teacher, the simplest way will be to use the logits as shown in this figure, the un-normalized outputs of the teacher, because this will convey more information compared to the hard levels that are usually used. The benefits of the knowledge, I'm sorry. So the benefits are significant because this can help with deploying these devices at the edge, improve generalization, and last but not least, can allow via neural architecture search powerful customized DNN to be deployed at the edge. So while the knowledge distillation problem is not new, the angle that I'm advocating for, the communication angling angle, is new. So more precisely, the idea is to use some sort of network of neural networks as shown here, which will allow for memory and communicational-aware student architectures optimization that can be obtained from a single powerful model. So how would this work? Well, first, we need to split the teacher's knowledge into independent partitions. Then we train individual students based on teacher's partitions. And this is usually a much more efficient process because the student has to grasp only a part of the teacher knowledge. And then, last but not least, we can distribute, we can distribute the inference and perform and deploy these individual student models on different resource-constrained devices. These individual students can work independently, therefore very efficiently, and only communicate at the fully, last fully connected layer. What kind of results can we expect? So this is a sample of some of the results we obtained directly on hardware using multiple Raspberry Pis. And as we see here, starting with a quite large teacher model, we could allow and obtain distributed inference with two and eight student networks with energy and flops per node in the range of fourteen, fifteen times more efficiently compared to the teacher. The loss in accuracy being, of course, negligible. More importantly, even if some devices become unavailable due to device failures, for instance, network failures, battery depletion, so on and so forth, this network of neural networks can achieve even higher values than ninety percent accuracy when we have only three or only four such devices available. So this is a promising direction that needs more attention. The second idea is to talk about federated learning in order to enable efficient on-device training. So as the keynote speaker today mentioned, we're doing quite well in terms of inference, but it's a lot more challenging to do on-device training. So this is where the federated learning can help with. And this is particularly important for us when we think of enabling online learning and other such approaches. So in recent years, we saw federated learning become the de facto paradigm for machine learning on edge devices, where each device uses only its own local data for training, as shown in this figure. So in short, the learning model is first sent to various clients. Then these clients update their model using local data. And then this updated parameters are sent back to the server, where they are finally aggregated and improved, an improved model is produced. So this aggregation can be as simple as averaging, hence the name of the most basic technique, federated averaging. So if we consider popular applications like, say, next word prediction or autonomous driving, which you see how federated learning can benefit from this kind of collaborative learning via crowdsourcing many individual devices. The challenges that we see in this case are related to the heterogeneity, which can espouse different forms, namely data, system and task heterogeneity. For instance, in the clients in this setup can have different speeds, different memory sizes, different wireless channel characteristics, or even different battery levels. So addressing this form of heterogeneity is crucial for enabling federated learning on thousands or hundreds of thousands of devices. There are many forms of federated learning. I'm not going to even try to attempt to mention though. But what I would like to push instead is this transition from this centralized setup, which is governed by the cloud, to a distributed setup where the interactions happen a lot more localized. And we can use subset of devices organized in communities at runtime. Assumed here, this distributed framework will allow to distribute different learning models depending on the device's capabilities for each community. For instance, devices in community one may have more memory available compared to other devices. So then they can deal with a more complex neural model. While devices in community two will need to get a simpler model to match their smaller memory. In each community, we can select server, community server, like device one or device five in this representation. And then a sparse distributed training algorithm can be used to efficiently train these models, aggregating the gradients for each community and handling the data heterogeneity. Of course, this is a very simple representation, but this idea, but in reality, community formation and training can happen dynamically at runtime based on the changes in the, in the environment. So once this local training happens over multiple rounds, an improved models can be sent eventually to the cloud and aggregated to produce a better model. So none of this is possible today with the state of the art, but there is a high demand for such an approach. The last idea that I want to talk about is about pushing human behavior into designing this kind of future edge AI systems. So let me start by saying that, for instance, human mobility is a fundamental characteristic of human condition. Given that people travel, given people's travel can directly contribute to spread of epidemic diseases first locally and then globally, the deep understanding of human mobility characteristics is of fundamental importance to our society. So for instance, this can start with monitoring people anonymized activity via GPS data and then continuing with sensing people, possible changes in health conditions, say failing ill, and then staying some place at a hospital or even at home. This is a great example of social sensing applied to epidemics where wearables, for instance, can play a major part. Obviously, detailed contact tracing at microscale has ramifications at macroscale. Indeed, tracking people's interactions and constructing the contact network are crucial steps for anticipating possible spread of infections among a particular community. For instance, based on data that we got from, GPS data that we got, we observed over a number of months the mobility patterns here in Austin and basically observed and analyzed interesting patterns of the infection spreading. The goal, of course, is contact tracing, but not only to track interactions between individuals, but also understand who's infecting whom. Rather than current methods that perform manual contact tracing, self-monitoring, we aim to use federated learning to identify and predict interactions that can lead to infections. So the vision that can bring together wearables or any other form of IT with mobile phones is based on a few important steps. So for instance, we need to worry first about data collection. So edge devices and wearables can collect contact networks, health status of the surrounding people in an anonymous fashion and then learn which interaction can lead to transmission. Then we need to worry about communication among devices. Each phone, for instance, can track the history of contacts within a timeframe and label nodes with healthy, exposed or sick, and then communicate these graphs with the at-home community of devices I was mentioning earlier to all the parties of interest. Finally, on-device training, each device can learn how to predict which interactions are most likely to lead to infection. And as devices learn correlations between interactions and transmissions, it can help identify the likely source for someone's infection and send a notification to get tested. So we note that privacy is by default preserved here since only graph structure and anonymized data is passed among devices. So to conclude my talk, I want to highlight three important ideas. So first, that edge AI needs principle design and optimization technique that should consider explicitly latency, memory, energy constraints, and even human behavior. Model compression federated learning are very promising for this problem space because can enable on-device inference and training at the edge. Progress in both directions is deeply dependent on understanding the network structure and dynamics. And last but not least, we need to go beyond applications like computer vision, image classification, and consider the human behavior at multiple scales. So a data-centric perspective is crucial to boost the edge AI societal impact. Finally, I would like to acknowledge my close collaborators and sponsoring agency for their support. Thank you. So I guess we're only five minutes late. So if there is no urgent question now, we can conclude this session and probably move to the final panel. So is there any question now, either of ask and answer, not just me? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for participating in this session. Thank you for the speakers, for bringing and sharing their ideas to the table. And thank you, everyone, for attending our talks. Thank you.
Thanks for organizing it, Radha.
Yes, thank you, Radha. We can hop over into the panel probably, right?
So it's in five minutes, if I understand correctly. Yeah.
But we can hop over there and the other link and get settled or something.
Okay.
I'll start.
Thank you very much.